I see myself. I didn't have to, there's Rick's on already. Can you hear me, Rick? He's connecting to audio. There, here's Carla. And Jack Luther's coming in. Can you hear us, Rick?
Yes.
Yep, so then Luther wanted to come in. He's a guest.
Where is this meeting?
Yeah, Warren Mabey's, Warren Mabey's coming on.
Yeah.
I see, I, it's.
Hi, Warren.
You have to show, do the audio, then you have to do video.
Okay, I have you now. And I'm doing there, I have, I have, wow, I can see four people on my screen.
I'm not sure the city of Livingston is down there, but someone else.
Okay, Kyra's not gonna be here, she just called me.
Okay, did she give you information about the wraparounds?
She did not.
Okay, well then, we did reapprove the budget, we'll just go with what I suggesting. Hi, Warren.
Okay, so, so.
I understood you sold a building.
We did, I need, I need to officially call the meeting to order. And I, I'm a little slow at this because I also have to take notes because we don't have a secretary.
We're gonna solve that today.
But I also need to make sure that this is being recorded. So it says, it says it's video, videos on and it says that the audio's on too, so I guess I'm being recorded.
Yeah, I've got a little TV up on mine that says it's recording, so we are.
Okay, so, um, um, great. So then, the first thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the last meeting. I'm not sure I can do that. Um, who?
All I have.
Guess what, we can't do that because I was the secretary at that meeting and I thought Faith was going to. I sent my minutes to her, but nobody has transcribed them and I guess that's on my lap too. So we'll have to do the minutes the next meeting.
Right, I had, I had meetings I've had for this year with February 19th and then July 22nd.
So it would have been the July 22nd meeting that we had.
And we didn't do much, we discussed the JCPenney building and Walter Kern's building as possible. People wanting facade work, but that was all, there's no applications or anything, but I think that's about all we did. Because we didn't have the information for the budget and we wanted to work on the budget. We'd have that farther on the agenda, I talked to Faith, got that all straightened up and it's part of my temporary preliminary budget that I sent to everybody.
Okay, so we will get to the budget in a, in just a little bit, Bob.
Right, I just wanted to say, you know, the minutes approving to those, I guess we'll wait till next time.
Yeah, so, um. Recording, recording. I have somebody on the line that wants in. Oh, nope, they just hung up. Okay, as far as I know, I have everybody here that should be here. Um, because I guess I'm supposed to check that every once in a while.
Yeah.
So then I'm gonna move on to, we can't approve the minute, so that was number two. Um, so number three is schedule, scheduled public comments. And we don't have anything scheduled, but Jack, you're the only public we have. Um, so do you want to say anything at this time?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, don't tell us what the weather is down there.
Oh, Jeff's down there, so then.
He's in Southern Texas.
So then we go to action items and the first action item is to review those board applications.
Right.
Um. So has everybody looked at the board applications? Paula Babion.
Right.
And Allison Vinc.
Vincenzi, yeah.
Vincie.
Right.
Um, you know, my thing is, one person has been in town for a while and one person's brand new into town.
The thing I say with Allison's, it looks like she has a lot of experience in design and community organizing. And her reasons for joining, I liked it, creating opportunities for sustainable development and local revitalization. Uh, she, that's one of her passions. And she's been working as a team, active contributor to team projects. And so she sounded like she was a pretty good applicant, even though she's only been here since July.
Right. And, and you know, sometimes new blood is always good.
Right. And Rick, did you, you got, you got the applications, didn't you? You're, you're, you're quiet.
Rick, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Rick.
Take yourself off mute.
You're on mute.
All for heaven's sake.
There you go.
First time you spend, I'm glad you went off mute. So I was just saying, you had a chance to read the application.
Yes, yeah, I've had a chance to read them and, uh, and I'm like you, so, uh, Paula, Babion is the one who's been in town for a while, right?
Yes.
That's right. They have, they have the Wilson Boot Company business.
Wilson Boot.
I met her about a month ago, because they were moving their locations. And she wanted, and I told her that we hadn't made any decisions yet. My only thing is, her only reason for the appointment is, I have a business and resident and I have concerns. It's okay to have concerns, I wish she had told us what the concerns were, you know?
Um, I, I think we have more information on Allison than anybody else because she also, in, I mean, she did a nice job of filling out the application. And she also gave us a resume too, so I do think of the two people, we have more information on Allison.
Yeah, we do. And that's quite a resume.
Yeah, did you, did you get all this, Warren? Did you get this material?
I did not.
Oh, I thought I sent it to you.
If I did, if I did, I missed it.
It would have been gone through your, if I sent it to you, it would be through your city email. It would be the, you know, through the city.
No, I didn't receive it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem.
You had got all that.
Yeah, I, I check it every day.
Okay.
Um.
Would, uh, would it be appropriate for me to suggest that, uh? Um, I mean, I don't know how much more there is to, how much more there is to know about the Sensi. Um, I kind of look at it like, okay, uh, she's, she's new in town and got a heck of a resume. And her reasoning, uh, reason for being interested makes sense and everything. Um, I'm, my inclination is to approve her today. Um, as much as I would like to approve Fabion. Um, I look at it like, well, I'm like you. Uh, Bob, I'm going, well, as a business owner resident, I have concerns, what does that mean? As, that's not a reason for joining this board necessarily. But, uh, but I would be interested in talking to her about it and, uh, could we approve her at the next meeting or some of the?
We, we, I think that's possible. What we end up doing, we actually make these suggestions to the city commission. And then they'll, they will approve and they will vote on it.
So, so, um, then the other thing we can do is we can set up interviews for these two people if we want to interview them. So if we wanted, if we wanted to interview them and set up an interview time, we are within our preview to do that.
Sure.
And it would be probably another meeting like this and they would come on to that meeting, you know, one at a time.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of doing that, you know, I mean, I, I mean, you know.
And I, I know they've been, well, these are, one's a September applicant and one's an October applicant. Um, I, I hate to keep dragging this on. Um.
Right.
Between now and the end of the year is very busy for me.
Yeah, I think we owe it to them to get back to them.
Well, I, I do too, so, um. I was never interviewed for the position, really by, well, I was interviewed by Ed Meese at the time. But, um, if you guys, if you think that we would be better off interviewing them, I think that's what we should do. If, if you're comfortable enough just going out on a limb by reading the two applicants, then I think that's what we should do. Because I do feel that we drug our feet, mainly because we are just meeting quarterly.
Well, I would suggest that we refer Allison Vincenzi to the city commission for becoming a member of the Urban Renewal Agency Committee. And I think I would probably hold off on Paula's.
Okay. Um, so I guess, um, can you put that in a motion form, Bob?
Yeah, I can, unless Rick wanted to do it.
Well, I will, I will put that in a form of a motion. I have, I'm, I move that we approve Allison Vincenzi for, uh, for the, uh, for application for the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, board and, uh, and that, uh, we arrange to, um, interview Paula Babion. And, uh, find out what her real interest is.
Okay, um, so we, at this time, we only need to put one person on the board.
Right.
Right.
So, um. So the first motion is to take Allison to the city, city commission as a possible, um, board member.
Uh huh.
And then I would say, there would have to be a second motion then to possibly then, um, interview Paula.
Yeah, when, when we have an, when we have an opening, basically. I mean, I think that, I think that's right. Those two motions sound good to me.
So, so are we going to set a, okay, so just a minute.
I think since we only have one opening, we just give Allison Vincenzi the okay to the city commission. And then hold Paula's until there's another opening. And if, and if Allison doesn't want it anymore, then we can consider Paula for that opening.
Well, I, I, I would rather leave it like that than trying to set up an interview when we don't have an opening left.
Right. Uh, it would be appropriate for us, we do need to get back to both of them anyway regarding their application, right?
Right, so we, we need, we need to wait till the city acts on Allison Vincenzi's and she accepts. And then we can get back to Paula. Because I don't think we want to tell Paula she's second runner up and she might.
Right.
Actually be okay, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only motion I have is the motion to take Allison's, um, application, um, to the city commission as a possible board member.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Um. And then wait on, um, Paula until we have approval.
Oh, oh, we all have an opening.
Well, approval or an opening.
Right.
Um. Okay, um. So I guess we need to vote on that, so all, all those in favor of taking Allison's, um, application to the city commission for a pot, um, as our, um. What, consent to be on the board, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And then all those oppose, um, the same.
Abstain.
I think you're a non-voting member, but I'm not sure, but thank you.
And I'm really abstaining.
Okay, three, so it passes, okay. Um, so then that would, um, the next thing on our agenda is.
So can I ask Warren a question? Does that mean we should contact Faith that this is our decision? And have her put it on the agenda for you, for your commission meeting?
I would think so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll contact Faith.
Okay.
Now, now can I ask, ask a follow-up question then?
Yep, go ahead.
So then, um, how, how do you plan on handling, uh, Fabion's application?
Well, I will ask, I will ask Faith to see if she would call. Well, I think like Bob said, we need to wait till the city commission approves it. And then, so she doesn't think she was our second.
Right.
You know, second one, so I think we, we wait until there's some sort of approval and then, um, we move on from there.
Right.
Is that okay?
That's, that's fine, I just wanted to know what the, what the plan would be.
Okay. Okay.
For in business.
Anything else on the board, the applications? Um, then I'm moving to B. And B is discuss an opening date for grant applications. Um, we are going, um, we have not spent any of the money that we, that, that was in the URA as of, um, July 1st, so we have about $114,000 there. We have waited until, um, we're gonna wait until the summer to really open up those app, um, to hand out that money. But we need to start processing and accepting grant applications. And so we need to come up with a time and date to, um, put out there that we're accepting grant applications and then what day, when that closes. And then give us time to review those and put them in a prioritized order. Um, or, or what we are willing to give to each grant in an order, so, um. Bob and I had discussed that as something that needs to be done, so we have enough time to get it out to the public, to have people apply and then for us to be able to review them.
And I think it'll also depend on Carla, on when we want to have our next quarterly meeting. If we want it on March 18th, would be, March 17th or April 21st would be the third Wednesday of the months. Uh, so if, when we want to meet, we will, we want the applications submitted by the council.
I, I, I also think we need to keep in mind this is, um, I know this is the end of the quarter that we're meeting. Um, but, um, I do believe that we need a January meeting. So we start off the new year with a meeting and here's why, we have officers to elect. And, um, I think we need to, so I think we need to stay to that, so I think at the end when we get down to, when our next meeting's going to be, I think we need a January meeting.
Well, the third Wednesday of January would be the 20th, if you want to stay to that same schedule.
Jan 20th, okay?
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, okay, well, let's, just, I, I just think that that needs to be one meeting. But I think we need to go back to the grants and we need to say, do we want to open them up in January, the 1st of January? And say, URA is accepting applications from January 1 to March 1?
Yeah.
Or then that'll give, that'll give us two, two months to get them in and then it'll give us, um, basically two months to review it, we'll have a March meeting. And then we, we can review it and have decisions made by May, by 1st of May.
Okay. Okay, that sounds reasonable to me. Now, can I, can I ask another question now, Carla?
Yep.
Um, uh, we, so we only, we normally only meet quarterly. Are we limited to just only meeting quarterly? We can have an extra meeting in January, right?
We, we can change that anytime we want because we used to meet monthly, but when we were put on a spending hold and basically had no money, we decided to just meet quarterly.
Okay. As long as our meetings are posted publicly, publicly out there, um, uh, we can meet more often as we need to, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So does that answer your, the, the question about the opening date? Uh, if opening, closing date for the grant applications, we, we go with January 1st to March 1st?
Um, if, and that's two months, so as long as we think that's long enough, um, you know, I'm okay with that. Um, I'm just trying to see, um.
But I think it's important, you know, I like those, that, that time period because then we decide on March 17th at that ma, meeting. And then that gives people time to get contractors if they know they're gonna be able to get the money.
Well, so.
We approved, has to go to city commission too.
But, yeah. So you want, you want a faster turnaround than I anticipated. So if we open it up January 1, close it either March 1 or February 28th.
Uh huh.
I mean, it's a day apart and then we review, how long are we gonna give us to review it?
I just say into March.
Just till our meeting in March?
Yeah, that, that would give us 17 days to look at the applications.
So, so we could put something out, we could announce something April 1st?
It, well, the city commission, let me see if that's, uh.
You're, you're right, we have takes to the city commission, so we would review it by March, just a minute.
Yeah.
We would review by March 18th. Review March 18th and then, um, it would have to go to the, um, the city commission. And Warren, when does the city commission meet again, the 1st and 3rd? You're on mute.
Yes, 1st and 3rd.
So there'd be April 6th.
Monday?
Right, so that's the 5th or the 19th.
Of March?
April.
Of April.
April 1st or April 15th?
Because, because there have already met.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
After our.
The 5th or the 19th.
Right, so I think we just do it that way and then submit them and they could, uh, look at it on the 5th. And that people would know in time to start looking for contractors.
Okay. Okay, so city, city commission meeting on, and that would be Mo, Mo, um, April. April 5th.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And if there's, if there's any questions, I guess we should have it, the tentative would be the 19th.
Right.
Okay. Um. Okay, and I don't think this is something we have to vote on, I think we can just agree on this.
Yes, well, I'm, I'm, I'll make.
I think, I think we agree on it because it's gonna change, you know?
Yeah.
Next time, next time we have a cycle, we have a change, so this is more administrative than it is legislative.
So I'm just gonna read it back to you. We're gonna open up grants on January 1. We're gonna close them February 28th. We will review the grants and make decisions on March 18th. And then we will take it to the city commission on Mar, on April 5th. And if needed, will our backup plan, um, if they have more questions and they need people to attend, we will, um, do it on April 19th.
Uh, one question, uh, Wednesday and March is the 17th, not the 18th.
Uh, Wednesday and March is the 17th, okay, thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Um. Any other discussions on grants?
So.
Sounds good to me. Glad to get moving, glad to get moving again.
We'll move on to Bob's proposed budget.
I have, we might want to look at that budget, but there's a couple other items which we, we need to discuss. Concerning that would be additions to that budget I just had, so. Uh, one of it has to do with, uh, having a secretary for the URA.
Uh. Well, that's, that's, that's D, do you want to go to D first?
I think we should maybe concern them together at the same time, you know?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Rick?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we could discuss my preliminary budget, but then it's gonna be affected by the other conversations, so. Uh, yeah, I ta, I talked to the city manager and the city manager talked to council. And they said it's well within our jurisdiction to hire a secretary for the URA. Uh, I have reached out to Lisa Harrell, who was our secretary before, at the suggestion of the city manager and I concurred, I mean, and she would.
That just surprises me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, and actually he mentioned her before I mentioned it to him. Uh, and so I talked to her today and she would be interested, she has to check with, you know, the county, but she thinks it'd be fine and she could do it as long as we met, like at 4:30 in the afternoon as opposed to morning. Because it would have to be after, uh, she finished her day of normal work. Um, she said the average, well, what they're paying for extra work at the county as far as, uh, part-time, it's 25 an hour. Uh, I thought each meeting, if she's going to schedule it, uh, send out an agenda with the, with the chairman's help, be there for the meeting, record the meeting and then play it back.
That's correct.
For each meeting, it would be four hours of work.
Yeah, probably.
And then I figured, so that would be a hundred dollars each meeting. And I figured we wouldn't want to limit it necessarily to the quarterly. So I was suggesting six meetings at a hundred, so it could be $600. So we would basically say that we would be paying a hundred dollars a meeting. Uh, and we put it in the budget at $600.
Well, my only thing Bob would. Well, my only thing, Bob, would be, um, I think as we get more active again, I think we're going to have more than six meetings.
Then we, then we could put as many meetings as you want. It's in the budget. And, uh, my budget has a lot of money for emergencies, so we could always subtract it from that. But I, I think it's fine. What, do you want to do eight meetings, or budget for eight meetings?
Well, we're going to have one in January, we're going to have one in March.
Right.
Those are both in the first quarter, and I would say, after we get money out there, I would say we meet almost, uh, almost monthly, so I would say we're more like almost to 12 already.
Yeah.
And that doesn't account for any special meetings.
Okay.
Okay, if, if we budget, if we budget $1,200 for, uh, secretarial services, uh, if we don't eat up the whole $1,200, that's good, too, right?
Right, yeah. Well, and I'm, I'm wondering, um, that's fine. I think if we go with 12, the first, I'd just say 12 meetings. I didn't say, I would either say budget 12, or budget, so we have about $1,500 in there.
Okay, well, then that's 15 meetings.
But, but I'm, I'm comfortable with 12.
Okay. Well, let's, let's do 12, because I know that, you know, getting together all of us for more than 12 meetings is rather, uh, you know, difficult. So if we have to, we can always go into, you know, uh, and, and we can always allot more money than that out of an emergency situation.
You can al- we can always amend the budget, right, Warren?
Yes.
Yeah, you, you never do that in a city, do you, Warren?
Never.
Okay.
And then also, before we get to talk about the budget, uh, I wanted, I, idea of, do we still aim for the flower baskets? Because no one asked us for any money this past summer.
I thought we paid that out last fall.
We did? Okay, so then we need, I, I don't have that in my budget, but according to our meetings, uh, that we were going to pay that until I, the BID had enough money to do it themselves. How are they, how are they set now?
Well, we, they are not set to do it, but Mike Cardos has a whole different idea about that. Because I talked to Kristen about it, and Kristen says, no, he says the URA has money to pay for that indefinitely, and I said, Kristen, that's how, it was never proposed that way. It was proposed that we would do it until you got more mon- you could, we have to go back to the district and ask them for more money this year. And I said, then, then the URA was to quit participating in the flower baskets. And that was my, that, I, I've been here since the start of the pu- flower baskets, and that's my understanding of it all, is that we might have one year left, and that's it.
Well, we can, you know, I mean, if we have the money, they can be, they can ask us to fund it, you know, I mean.
Sure.
They can, they can always come to us. Most people come to ask, even the city comes to us to ask for money. So I figured, you know, the BID, we can budget it for next year, but, you know, they, they, uh,
Do you remember what it came to?
What?
Do you remember what it came to? Because they, we changed who we went to. And I think it was like $12,000. Flowers were.
It seems like a lot of money to me, but, uh.
Well, it went way up.
Right.
With, you mean with the, uh, when they changed the, the contract?
Yeah, when we changed the contract and used a new provider. And they're going to use the same provider this coming, this coming year, so, um, I, I have to say, uh, flowers, and I can get a more, I can get a more accurate count, um, but I would say 10 to $12,000 is what I remember it costing.
Okay.
If everybody read the newspaper last night, Patricia Grabo's harangue on the BID and the city. Does anybody have any idea what that's all about?
It's probably about the fact that the city awarded the CBB to the, um, LBID, and Patricia Grabo was against that.
And they said they, they want to change the boundaries. I don't know. We don't have to discuss it right now, but I was totally confused by her letter. So I'm out of that, I'm out of that loop.
I, I can't believe, I can't believe that she confused anything.
So, so Bob, what?
We don't do any, we don't do any, we don't do any Christmas lights, right?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. Now you want to look at my budget and see what people think about it? So we, we basically have 114, and this would be, this is the tentative 2020, 21 budget.
2020, okay.
And, uh, we have 114, 650 of discretionary funds. I talked to Shannon, we had talked originally about wanting to offer Third Street residents to do their sidewalks, because they are within the URA district. And Shan- Shannon suggested that, uh, we, uh, we start offline and do three street sidewalks, and it would be about $15,000, $5,000 a property.
And they have to apply for that, correct?
Yes, we'd have to go out for, they'd have to apply for that, and, uh, and we would, you know, we would give each property owner at that point $5,000 toward it.
Okay.
The traffic light wraps, I was hoping that Kyra would be here, because she was talking to the BID about it, so I have no idea where that stands. Uh, but I just talked to five controller boxes, three large and two small, which is what we had last time, budgeting that at $6,000.
Okay.
And then, and then I just had figured, uh, now we have to add the flower baskets and secretary. So my, I just put $15,000 reserve, that's an arbitrary number, you know? But so, uh, it basically would have a secretary, which we had decided was going, was going to be 1200.
$1,200.
Okay, the flower basket, I mean, the wraparounds we have in here, we have those at 6,000, and then the, uh, baskets, we're going to say 12,000 right now, okay? So if you subtract, you can either subtract both of those from the reserves to give us the lower reserves, or we can take it out of the facade program. I've, I, you know, I figured, and having talked to other members, is that, uh, some projects need more money than others. So I'd like, that's why I kind of put the facade in at 76, because we have several projects downtown going on, which I know people are going to want to have money for. So, uh, but as I said, this was all just kind of thought-provoking, so if you, uh, if you took 12,000 after, out of that, that would give 3,000. And then, uh, 1,200 out of that, uh, that would give us, if we took it all out, we, we would have 1,800 under reserves.
So what do you have under facade right now?
What, you have it in front of you? I have 78,650.
Well, I took the 14, 650, subtracted the 15,000 for sidewalks, subtracted 6,000 for lights, or for, for the traffic wraps, subtracted 12,000 for the flowers, and subtracted 1,200 for a secretary, and I came to 80,450.
You did?
Yes.
Because I had mine, and I just subtracted out of the emergencies. You don't have any emergencies left, or, or not?
I don't have your budget in front of me, so I'm just working from the 14, 650 and subtracted the four things that we've talked about.
So you subtracted 15,000 for Third Street sidewalks?
Yes.
6,000 for the wraps?
Yes.
And then 12, what, how much for the ra- uh, baskets?
12,000 for baskets.
Well, 12,000 for baskets, and, uh, 1,200, 100 for the secretary.
Yes.
And that left, how much for the?
That leaves overall 80,450.
Okay, for grants. Now, would you want to take anything out and put it under, uh, you know, reserves for emergencies?
Yes, I think we need some, I think, I think it's just, um, makes good sense that we are good stewards of the monies that we have, and we put some, um, reserves aside.
So we take that out of the 80,450?
Yes.
What do you want to do? Take, uh, 10,000 out of that?
Um.
Reserves?
Well, I, I wouldn't mind taking more.
Because I had taken 15,000 originally.
I would, I would rather go 15,000 or 20,000 to put in reserves.
Okay, so 20,000 in reserve, which means 60,450 for grants.
Yes.
Right. And in reserve, if something came up and, you know, we needed more money for grants, we could, we could always vote to use some of the reserves for additional.
Yes, we could.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, and then, so we've already started the 2021 year, correct?
Yes. It'll go through June 30th.
So we'll get another set of monies come July 1. That should look very similar to this 14, one, $114,000. By July 1, we should get another installment.
Yeah, depending on, but also, you also have to depend that, that originally there was $300,000 for a capital inlet, outlay. 185, 350 went for the downtown project. I talked to city manager, I said, do we have a downtown project next year? Or do we get $300,000? And he said, there's part of Second Street that hasn't been done. But I don't think the city, Warren, can tell us, I don't think that they, they've discussed that at all yet. So we're, you know, there's a potential we're going to get more than 114,000, but, you know, depending on whatever the CIP does.
Okay. Well, I say we stick with this budget, and then, and then, um,
Yeah.
You know, then, then it gives us the same opportunity next year, January of 2022, to go into that with a stronger budget.
Right, and we, you know, the budget would be 21, 22, which we would submit before, before the end of next year. So, so that budget, so we, we will have more, more money for the end of next year, too.
Right. So is there another, um, so at some point, we have to put this into a motion and approve it, and then, um, we need to take it to the city commission meeting. And I'm wondering, that next meeting then would be the 21st, am I right, Warren?
I don't have the calendar here, but yeah, it sounds right.
Yeah, it's the 21st.
Okay. So it would behoove us to get on, to get in and have them put us on their agenda as soon as possible.
Well, I, I'd contact Faith immediately, have her put us on the agenda. I can either work on the, redo my budget.
Can you, could, could you attend that meeting, Bob?
On the 21st?
Yeah, I, I, I get $25 an hour now, remember, something.
And I do, too, because I'm doing the secretarial work right now.
Yeah, I have it down here. I'll be there, I'll be on the 21st, I'll be there.
I just, um, I don't have a full staff back yet from everybody traveling and me having to quarantine people after they travel, and blah, 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 blah.
No, I, I, I can easily do that, and
Okay.
Mr. Van Aken might like to join me if I offer him a libation afterwards.
I might, I might. But it doesn't take much liba- libation to bribe me into doing something.
Okay.
So can I get a motion to, um, approve Bob's budget? And I think we'll quit calling it Bob's budget, but we'll call it the URA budget.
Right.
21.
Right.
Yes. And I'll make the motion.
And I have a second.
Sorry, I'm just busy writing.
See, that would work, since we have a lot of reserves, if the baskets come in more than the $12,000. We have, we have latitude there.
Yep.
Okay. So, um, all those approve, I?
I.
And all those oppose the same. Okay, so it passes. Great.
Do you want me to kind of fill up, uh, go back and adjust my stuff? Send it all to you, that, that's what we're going to present to the city commission?
Yes, that'd be great, if, if you want to, or I can send you what I have.
Well, I've got it all on my computer. All I have to do is add and, and change numbers, yeah.
I, I'd have to put it all in again, so that's.
I've got it all.
Okay.
I, if.
So then.
Just, just to make sure we're all on the same page, for me, look at the numbers that we, uh, remember. But I, I think we're good.
Okay.
I, I will send you all a copy before my meeting with the city commission. So you, that there's a gross error or a change, like with Carla, if you find out the baskets are more, we can adjust that.
Yes.
Or if I submit it to the city, but also besides.
I am going to, I mean, I'm going to say, call Kristen and ask her about the flowers.
Right. And since the city manager so magnanimously offered our money to her, uh, you know, we'll do whatever they need.
Okay. Okay, I got that.
And also, also on the agenda, besides the budget, will be the, uh, application for, uh, Incenti.
Yes, yes. Okay, yeah. And I will call Faith on that tomorrow.
Right. Faith has the, uh, she can submit the application to the commissioner, so it's in their packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. So, are we okay to move on, because we already covered secretary of the URA?
Yeah.
Okay. So then I'm going to go to, um, old and continuing business, and that was the utility wraps with Kyra, and I say that needs to just be postponed till next time.
And we have in the budget 6,000, so, uh, you know.
Now, is, is the, is that kind of Kyra's thing? I don't.
She, she did it the first time, Rick, and, um, so she said she didn't have time to do it this time, but she would head it off and turn it over to, um, a couple different people, and so her and I together kind of worked on that, but she knows more about that than I do. I just made contacts for her.
Right, the way it works is that in the past, artists put in, uh, drawings to be used, or pieces of artwork, the finished artwork, and, uh, then a group of people chose which ones to use as the wraps. Uh, the people that did it last time no longer want to do that, so Kyra was going to find out how that could be done. So tell she, so it's in the budget at 6,000, if, uh, she comes up with it, it's fine. Uh, so tell she, so it's in the budget at six thousand, if, uh, she comes up with it, it's fine. Uh, I think.
If we, we have monies, it, it's for sure in the flower area that we could move if it comes out to be more.
Right.
So, okay.
So just, I, all I'm, what I was trying to find out or understand was, so for all practical purposes, I guess I'd say, uh, uh, that Kyra is, uh, kind of the chair of the, of the wraps committee, huh?
She would say no.
She would say no, but she is.
She's the organizer, or.
Yeah.
Front person.
Okay.
So, um, sorry that I'm keeping everything moving, but, um, we're onto new business. And so, um, basically, what kind of agenda we want for our January meeting? Um, I'm gonna put the, um, wraps on there.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Anything else right now that anybody knows of for the?
I, I would have grants on there, you know, like, uh.
Yeah.
Just, just have that always be on there for some kind of discussion.
Okay.
Uh, also, FYI, I have it here. I had the, when our, when our terms are up for renew. And I think the only people that were up for renewal in twenty-one was Carla and me.
Uh-huh.
So we need to have elections of authors and deal with, uh, re- renewals.
When does, when are those, um, Bob, when are you up and when am I up? What's the date on those?
That's what I'm trying to find here. I saw it earlier to see this evening, but.
Well, you can always call, text me, or call me and leave that with me, or email me too, Bob.
Right, right, right.
I think, I think it's the first of the year.
I wasn't sure. That's, that's maddening. It was here a minute, a little while ago. Oh, here, I'm sorry, looking right at it. Uh, six twenty-one for both of us.
So six twenty-one, okay.
So I'm not sure if six twenty-one is when everybody's six twenty-one or six twenty-three. So is that when we do officers?
No, we're supposed to do officers first part of the year.
Okay, then we do officers and all of us are on right, right now. Warren, you need to see whether you wanna join, rejoin us, you're up twelve twenty. So if you wanna continue with this, we'd love to have you, or have another city commissioner assigned to us, whatever.
No, that's fine.
But you, I guess you have to worry about that with the city.
Yeah.
You're saying, you're on, you're on. I guess that's a yearly thing when you take on, take on different committees. Yeah.
I believe so.
Okay, so for next time, we, I'm gonna have wraps on their grants. Um, discuss terms up, um, how everybody's feeling. We need to elect, um, president, vice president. Um, and then election of officers. Which is president and vice president.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else right now that anybody knows of?
Do you go through a, um, uh, do you just do a nomination process for those two positions?
It'd be nice to have some discussion about it, so we, um.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I'll tell you this, um, I'm, I want to be done as the president of the U R A. And that will probably, um, allow me to possibly stay on longer. Um, COVID is kicking my butt as a business owner.
Yeah.
Um, I, right now, I am on the floor from six in the morning till four, four in the afternoon. I have no time to get down to my office, and I can't run a business without time in my office. So, um, and you know, with the quarantines we're going through and with needs that other people have and with, right now, business is so slow, it, it's worse right now than it was in March and April of last, of this year. So I, um, if, if it continues this way, I really need to, I just need time to, I can spend on my business and not feel bad about it.
Yeah.
So, and I've chaired this for quite some time now.
Yeah, I think we understand.
Okay. So, um. And it, any comments, anything that's, um, that's our new, our next thing is commissioner comments?
I have nothing else.
I, I have, I have nothing else to add right now either.
No, me neither.
Okay. I'm just writing stuff down.
That's fine.
Um, so then, we, Jack has left us, so we don't have a public comment, um, with us.
He may be there.
What?
Are you still there, Jack?
No, I.
Yeah, he's there.
I'm still here.
Okay, I'm sorry, Jack.
He just went off video.
I, I take some time out to make dinner.
Well, send some our way. Do you have any comments, Jack?
No, I just, uh, you know, thank you guys again for what you do here, it's, it's really appreciated.
Oh, I got a question for Jack. It has, it's not a U R A thing, but you knew that Parks Reis wants to get a, a sign for the building, the combination block? I thought.
I've seen some emails going back and forth, and that, that shouldn't be a problem at all, you know?
Yeah, I, I think we'd like to see whether we can get, what's her name, Jessie, to write it?
Well, good luck with that.
Yeah, well, I think the state actually threw it back at us to talk to her, so we'll see. I got some information on it already.
Yeah, yeah. That's good, good. Not, not.
All right.
Now you only need to convince Warren to let us put the sign that they've got up on that, on that building that they own.
On what building?
Might be too late for that.
Well, did you sell that, Warren?
Pretty much.
Yeah, that's, that's the rumor on the street, he sold it, so, you know, we'll sneak it in there before escrow closes.
It's Jill's building, so you'll have to talk with her.
Well, the new.
Don't, don't take the sign with you, we'll, we'll, we'll put it up for the new.
Actually, the, uh, the person involved with the real estate transaction saw the sign. And, uh, was quite impressed.
Good, okay.
All right. I, I hate to, um, um, cut anybody short, but if we're ready to adjourn this, I need a motion to do that.
Uh, next meeting now is, is definitely January twentieth, correct?
Yeah, next meeting will be January twentieth.
At four thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess I'm just gonna assume that it's gonna be Zoom again?
I, I would.
I would, I would probably assume that.
Okay, because I don't see anything changing, we have another holiday to go through. Um, so I will, I will get to, um, Faith on that too, so she can, um, schedule us as soon as possible. Um.
And also figure out who's gonna do the Zoom. Since you know how to do it now. Since you're now, you're such an expert now.
Well, yeah, took me a long time to get there. Um, okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. I don't know if it needs a second, but.
It's excellent, people, it's one hour, that was a great meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a lot done.
Right.
We did, and thank you for moving along. Um, my mom turned eighty yesterday, so now I'm going home to get, do a Zoom birthday party.
Ah.
So I'm pretty excited about that.
Yeah, well, wish her a happy birthday.
Okay.
Tell her the, eighty, uh, sixty is the new eighty, so.
Eighty's the new sixty.
Yeah.
She'll love hearing about that because she actually said, um, this is the first birthday that's ever bothered her.
Really? Well, tell her my mom lived to be a hundred and three, so she's.
I will. Sounds great.
We all need to be goal oriented.
So happy holidays to everybody.
Yeah, happy holidays. Thank you for your time tonight.
What?
Carla, just tell her that she's celebrating the fifty-first anniversary of her twentieth birthday.
Okay, I will, that's a good one.
That's what I do.
All right.
I like that, I'm, I'm gonna use that this, end of this month, Jack, I'll do it.
Okay, take care, everyone.
Take care, bye-bye.
Thank you.